Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our City Commission meeting. We, hopefully, I see some of you have an agenda. So if you don't have one, you're welcome to grab one to follow along. But we'll go ahead and get started and call this meeting to order. So if this is your first time at our City Commission meeting, we start off our meeting with a moment of silence and then pledge of allegiance before our roll call. So I'll ask you to join me in standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next, we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Commissioner Repart?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Kelly?
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. All right, so next is our first opportunity for public comment. Again, if you're new to our commission meetings, I'll kind of walk you through the process. We have a couple opportunities for public comment. The very first one being public comment on items that we're actually voting on tonight. So earlier today, we had a whole four meetings, four standing committee meetings, and we voted on a whole host of issues, and you'll see those listed. And then we have two scheduled public hearings a little bit later on. And these are for a Brownfield Amendment Plan for the West Garfield Apartments. And then a Brownfield Amendment Plan for the Steel Avenue Project at 1535 Steel. So if you are here to speak on either of those issues, I'm going to ask you just to stay put until I open up those public comment periods. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll have another opportunity for public comment. So if you are here tonight to speak on something that we're actually voting on, now's an opportunity to come forward.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to talk about Number 10 under the Committee of the Hall.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And so I'll give you, just so everyone knows, a couple of rules about our public comment. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. You can follow the clock here. And then afterwards, if you just write your name on that clipboard over there, that way our clerk can get it right in the minutes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay?
I'll try and talk fast. Good evening. My name is Jane Whittington, and I'm a resident of the Second Ward. As you can tell by my shirt, I'm a member of Moms Demand Action. In early August, I was in Washington, DC for the annual Moms Demand Action Conference, which also included members of Students Demand Action and Everytown Survivor Network. This is the fourth year for this conference. The first year, there were 60 people in attendance. This year, there were 2,000. We heard from Shannon Watts, the mother who founded Moms Demand Action, Michael Bloomberg, who is one of our major funders, and the US Senator who represents the city where the Sandy Hook murders occurred, and many other passionate and committed speakers who are working tirelessly for common sense gun legislation. Scheduled for Saturday night was a dinner, awards ceremony, and party. Instead, we heard about the mass shooting in El Paso. So instead of celebrating, we marched to the White House and the Capitol and stood vigil with our sisters and brothers from Texas. When we woke on Sunday morning, we heard about the murders in Dayton. While these mass shootings garner publicity, outrage, and fear, we know that every day in the United States, 100 lives are lost to gun violence. 100 people who leave behind family and friends whose lives will never be the same. We see that devastation right here in Grand Rapids. Over the summer, I went to a vigil put on by Resilience's Loyalty commemorating the lives lost in Grand Rapids to gun violence. While I was there, I spoke with one mother who has lost two sons. I can't even begin to imagine how horrible that would be. I have five grandchildren in the Grand Rapids schools, two teacher daughters, and a grandson at the University of Michigan, which last year had a campus-wide shelter-in-place situation. They sent emails out to all their students saying, "Run, hide, fight." I worry about their safety each and every day. I've also been volunteering for 10 years in my neighborhood school. And believe me when I tell you that trying to explain to a four-year-old why we're all hiding behind the bookcases is a chilling experience. Laws for enhanced background checks, protection of victims of domestic violence, and red flag laws are languishing in committee in both Lansing and Washington. While the vast majority of Americans are in favor of these laws, the powers that be refuse to vote on or even debate these bills. Moms Demand Action applauds the City Commission for its willingness to consider gun ordinance, which makes us all safer. I know that other community organizations like Moms on a Mission and Mothers Against Street Killings are equally concerned about the onslaught of gun violence in our city. Even small steps are appreciated, and we urge the City Commission to vote yes on the passage of these ordinances and to continue to consider even more actions, including implementing the provisions of pure violence to begin to lower the horrible toll of gun violence in Grand Rapids.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
I have something for you later.
Okay.
My name is Rosemary Brown, and I'm here to speak on Letter D, Number 8, repealing and replacing noise control ordinance, Number 9, amending to add fines for violation of the city's noise control ordinance. The first fine is $100, second $200, third $400. Starting at $100 is excessive. If you are serious about negative interactions between the youth and residents and law enforcement's excessive initial fines of $100 for noise doesn't prove it. The first should be a first verbal warning. Second should be 25, 75, and subsequent. Everyone, Grand Rapids GRPD is well aware, 49507 is poor. We are forgotten when money is dispersed, but first to take, lay hold of, find ways to separate us from our little hard-earned money, then take us to jail, prison, give us a criminal record, starting with our youngsters that ruin us early in life. Yes, $100 is excessive. Start low. Please, let's everyone just start over with the fines. The second one is D, Number 10, repeal the firearms weapons ordinance for pneumatic guns, BB guns, airsoft rifles. 49507, listen up. When you start public education informing in our area of weapons ordinance focusing particularly on information and outreach to parents, all school-aged children, including high school children, should be informed. Officers should go to all the schools and inform all these kids during assemblies to make sure everyone is aware of the consequences. This is important. This is someone's life. 49507 and other areas, please get involved to know what is happening and informed with your community area. Young people, get together to help each other. Stop fighting each other. You are all in the same 49507 area. This affects you and all of us. Put down the toy guns. Put down the real guns. Pick up your books and learn. Get that education. Whoever said $100 for a first fine, that should have been shot down immediately. You know we don't have no money. I'm just saying. And I'm done.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Brown. You can give that right to the city clerk, and he'll make sure that we get copies. Thanks. Good to see you.
Hello. I wanted to speak on the solar panels. I don't know if the City of Grand Rapids is actually looking to invest in solar panels, but I was here at the commission meeting earlier, and I kind of like, I kind of overheard you guys talking about how in Texas, they are using the energy from the sun, which radiates solar energy, which people can actually not have to pay a certain amount of bill because of utility. I think that'd be a good way, or a good thing, for Grand Rapids to be able to do, or to educate people more on renewable energy and just natural energy. I know a lot of people stress about potentially Section A or other things. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but most of the time, people are on Section A because they want to save money on their rent. But if you can actually help people save money from energy that is natural energy that is from the sun, I believe that is a great thing to do. Also, on the firearm ordinance, I was here earlier, and I could honestly tell the actual guns from the real ones, but the fake ones. But just speaking on that, when you guys speak on the education piece, I just want people to understand that a lot of people that may be tottering guns or things like that, most of the people that maybe like look like a hood dude or a gangster or somebody I meet, like a jack boy or something like that, most of those people are in those positions and totting those straps are because of the lack of opportunity that people actually have. So I understand, I like the ordinance and everything else, and I understand it, but there's a lot of people that just don't have the opportunities that makes them want to go out there and, you know, it's a cold world out there, and it's tough out here in society. So when we're talking about the ordinance and everything else for firearms, I just wanted to say that it's very tough. It's very tough. And I just hope that when you guys do the education piece, that you guys are actually educating not just a certain demographic of people, but also trying to reach people in the hood to let them know and try to create more opportunities for people, if you kind of get what I'm saying. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on something we're voting on tonight? All right, I'm going to close that public comment period, and we're going to move on to approval of our minutes. And these are from our last meeting, which occurred on October 8th. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
To vote.
Support. All right, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to petitions and communications.
The first one is a communication from Heather Havens regarding the resignation from the Up-Down Corridor Improvement Authority.
And that is referred to Committee on Appointments. Next, that will take us to reports of city officers.
First one is Comptroller's Report for the period of September 25, 2019, through October 9, 2019, in the amount of $16,801,505.20.
That is received and filed.
And the Treasurer's Report for the period of September 21, 2019, through October 4, 2019.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next, that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items on our agenda that we voted on earlier in one of our meetings where there was a unanimous vote. So tonight, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. So Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Vote.
Support.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next, that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have one ordinance before us tonight.
The first ordinance is ordinance amending Section 1 of Budget Ordinance 2019-19 for Fiscal Year 2020 Amendment Number 7.
To vote.
Support.
All right, Commissioner O'Connor from our Fiscal Committee, you want to tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor. There's five items tonight. Significant ones on here are Police Department Overtime Reimbursement Grant. We shared that with Wyoming. They administer the grant. It's for seatbelt enforcement and OWI enforcement. I received a FEMA grant for our Fire Department to help remove exhaust fumes from our various fire stations and training centers, along with some money that's set aside for wellness training. We have a 61st District Court Domestic Assault Response Team grants that helps victims of crimes and domestic assault. We have some money that we're expending for Studio Park. Built the brand-new parking lot at the new Studio Park facility downtown. This is our portion of the lease that will ensure those spots are available to us so that we can then lease them out. And then we're expending $50,000 for the Third Ward Equity Fund.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? It's happy to see the DART move forward. That's been a valuable program at our Police Department and our community. All right, with that, that's a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. And can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up will take us to our scheduled public hearings, and we have two scheduled public hearings tonight. So I'll read the first one. This is a public hearing to consider a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the West Garfield Apartments redevelopment project, which is located at 1975 and 1951 Jefferson Avenue. So pursuant to state law, all of the notifications for this public hearing were made. So we'll start off the public hearing tonight. We'll give Mr. Klooster from our Economic Development Department an opportunity to speak. And then I see Mr. Jeremy Deru is here. So we'll give you an opportunity to speak afterwards. And then if you're here to be heard on this item, I'll open it up for public comment shortly after that.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. So this is public hearing to consider a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the West Garfield Apartment Project proposed at 1951 and 1975 Jefferson Avenue Southeast by LinkUp Nonprofit Housing Development Corporation. The purpose of this Brownfield Plan Amendment is to facilitate a grant from the Brownfields' local Brownfield Revolving Fund to close the financing gap for this project. So the project is a $6.4 million redevelopment project with 26 apartments, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. It's proposed as a lead silver building, and it is funded through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. The grant that is requested is a $201,000 grant approximately to help pay for the costs of demolition, environmental site assessment and remediation, public infrastructure improvements, and site preparation. This project is right across the street from LinkUp's previous project, which was at 100 Burton. And I think they're doing a ribbon cutting to open that one and a groundbreaking for this one at the same time. So I'd like to invite Jeremy Deru from LinkUp to come up and talk about the timeline and why they think this project is important and the goals that they have for it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Klooster. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Jeremy Deru, Executive Director of LinkUp. Thank you for the chance to be here today and for the potential support for the Brownfield grant this project. It's been before you a few times now over the last while as we try to move forward with this. It's come to you for pilot support, for home support, for a parcel split. And so this is, I think, the fourth time it's come to you for a vote on this. It's a 26-unit affordable housing project with units available for 30%, 40%, and 60% of area median income. It's right across the street from another project that is, 36 families will be moving into this week that is opening up on 100 Burton Street. And so this kind of continues to support for that one. That project, when we were able to start taking applications for it, had over 500 families apply for the 36 units. And so there is a huge demand for affordable housing in our city and in this community. And so we're really excited to be able to move forward with this project. Our goal is to have this project opening a year from now. And so we are moving as quickly as possible to get construction started yet before winter breaks and make sure that we're moving and kind of meeting this demand that we see right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, you said the project is due to be opened within a year?
Yes.
And can you just go back over the units again?
Yeah.
I'm looking at them. I need some clarity on one thing.
Okay, so it's 26 units of housing in the building with 30% units, 40% units, and 60% of area median income units? So is that, I'm not sure what?
Yep. And one of the things I love about this project, the rent is affordable. I think that's very important for the community. That board is the Second Ward and Third Ward, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's right kind of on the board of the First and Third Ward. Yeah, so it's, yeah, First and Third, right on the board. So Jefferson is a cutoff, and this is a parking lot of the church that's located right at the corner of Jefferson, and so right on the corner. So it's in the First Ward.
How much is the Third Ward, because I want to claim it all?
0% actually falls within the Third Ward boundary, so I, but...
But it's still good for everyone who lives in that area.
But another component for this project, which is really important for our work, is that we are intentional kind of hiring local and minority companies to be working on our projects. We expect that about $4.5 million of the two projects will result in contracts going to local minority contractors. And so that's a critical part of that. Definitely does benefit a lot of Third Ward businesses in that process.
Yeah. And we were happy to have the support from MISTHA for Lytec.
Yeah.
I know those are very competitive, and we've been aggressively trying to get as many here in Grand Rapids and West Michigan as possible. So nice work.
Thank you. And just a side note, the process for that starts all over again on Friday when they start the new QAP negotiation, the conversation. So all the rules change every other year. So we're about to start renegotiating that process again.
Yes. Always a joy.
Mr. Deru, you did say there's a celebration tomorrow. Did you not say that?
Yes, at 10:30 tomorrow, we'll be having a ribbon cutting for the project across the street and a groundbreaking for this one as well to kind of start the process and get it moving as best we can.
Great, thanks. Well, if you want, you can take a seat, and I'll see what comments we have from the public. And if there's questions, I'll ask one of you to come back up and maybe answer those if you're able. So if you're here to be heard on this project, now's an opportunity to come forward. We have the same rules that apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. And again, this is for the Brownfields, specific to this project that LinkUp is doing. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that public com... Oh, go ahead.
Well, we see it's 500 people trying to apply for it, so it's a high demand, as he was saying. I just want to press the issue, to hope that y'all see that people in the inner city do need home and housing. All right.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, I'll close that public comment period, and we'll refer that back to the Committee of the Hall. All right, next up will take us to our next public hearing. And this is a public hearing to consider a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Steel Avenue LLC redevelopment project. And this is located at 1535 Steel Avenue. So again, all the notifications were made pursuant to state law for this Brownfield Plan Amendment. And we'll start it off again with Mr. Klooster. And then we have, let's see, where is my list? Well, we'll just start with Mr. Klooster, and then we'll turn it over to the representatives.
Yep, I'll be happy to introduce that.
All right, we have Jeff and Jared.
Thank you. So another Brownfield Plan Amendment, this time to facilitate a business development project. So this is a project located at 1535 Steel. It's the redevelopment of a vacant contaminated property. Legacy Steel is a fabrication and steel erection company that does business nationwide. They're proposing a $2.1 million project that would result in a 25,000-square-foot industrial facility essentially. Legacy Steel anticipates initially taking up about half of that space. They're currently located in leased space just down the road. So that means that the other half of the space would be available for other opportunities for other industrial businesses as well. Legacy Steel anticipates that in connection with this project, they will be creating five new jobs as they continue to expand, and that with the additional space available, 12 more manufacturing or industrial jobs could be created with average wages of $17 and $18 an hour. So we do have Jeff Liu, who's the president of Legacy Steel here, to talk again about the timing and his goals for the project. And Jared Belka is here, representing the company as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Liu. I know we saw you and met you at those of us who serve on the Economic Development Project team, so it's good to see you again.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the invite, and thanks for your consideration. So we moved into the city about five years ago, and then we moved on Steel Ave about three years ago. And now we just keep growing and expanding, and we need new space. So we're a construction company, and we build steel buildings specifically. And we're looking to grow and expand and spruce up the area.
Great, thanks. Jared, anything to add? And then I'll see if my colleagues have any questions.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight and for this consideration. As Jeff said, he started the company about five years ago, about five to 10 employees. They're now up to about 65 to kind of stress their continued growth. They're bumping elbows right now in their current leased space down the road. And Jeff saw this as an opportunity to make an investment within the city. They love being in the city and want to continue there. Plus, they're a steel company. It's on Steel Avenue, so that works out well for them as well. But again, appreciate your consideration. The majority of the costs within the plan are to address contamination at the site. There is a known plume in that area that they're dealing with vapor intrusion issues. So the majority of the costs in the Brownfield Plan are to deal with a vapor barrier and ventilation system for the building.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, if you have any problems on Steel Street, there's plenty of vacant buildings in the Third Ward that we would love to have your company in that area. And if you expand and you need more property, please come see us.
Okay.
Come see our economic development team. That's their job.
Well, I'm on the economic development team, so that's why you need to come see me.
Great, thanks. If you both want to take a seat, I'll see if there's public comment or questions. And then if there are questions that either of you can answer, I'll give you that opportunity. So is anyone here to be heard on this request for this Brownfield for environmental contamination?
Hello. My name is Martha Cooper. I'm Grand Rapids. I'm very happy to hear that some Brownfield development credits will finally be going to some housing projects. But I'm a little curious, because once upon a time, I had an idea of how much money these Brownfield developments were. And right here now, on the agenda, there's no actual amount for the amount for the housing. And I also don't see under Number 2 for the business how much money for the Brownfield development credit is for that. And since it is public money, I would like to have those figures. Thank you.
Great, thanks. It is in the packet. John, do you want to answer that question, or I have it in front of me?
No, yeah, very happy to. So to the question on the first project, that's a $6.4 million project, and the grant funding request is for $201,000. And for the second project, this is, what did I say? $2.1 million project, and the Brownfield reimbursement would be estimated at $337,000. Again, as Jared said, the majority of that goes to deal with the environmental contamination at the property to make sure that the development is safe for people to be in and work in.
And it's a little bit different, because the one is the revolving fund and the LBRF grant program.
Correct.
Which is separate from the others.
Yeah, so the first project, again, is a grant from monies available in the local Brownfield Fund. And the second project is a reimbursement from the new taxes that will be generated by the project.
So thanks for clarifying.
Excuse me. John, would you quick explain on the reimbursement? This property is known to have contamination. This gentleman and his company will be spending their own money to do the remediation and clean up a site that is contaminated. And we will reimburse them for those funds over the course of X number of years. So this is not money that we're giving to these folks. These folks are spending their own hard-earned money to do right and clean up the environment. And we're just allowing them to recapture some of those dollars over the course of a period of time.
Over 12 years.
12 years. Thank you.
Yeah. Great, thanks. All right, any other questions or comments? And this is specific to this request?
Bill Peterson, 639 Cherry. My question is this. I used to work on Steel Street, I think, in about that area. And there were a lot of pretty evil chemicals in that general vicinity, plus the railroad behind it. I was wondering what specific organization was located on or near that lot that they're talking about?
Okay. Well, let's see if there's some history. I don't know off the top of my head, but we'll see if somebody else does.
Yeah, I mean, there are lots of properties that qualify for this program within the city. This one in particular is adjacent to a railroad yard, which could be one of the causes for the concern. Primarily, again, it's a vapor issue. And so there are chemicals in the ground that can volatilize and come up through the building. And so it could have been, I should say that within the packet, there is a lot of detail about that. about that. I apologize that I don't have it on me. But it's all contained in the environmental report for the property.
Yeah, thanks. It's lengthy. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll close that public comment period, and that will be referred back to the committee of the hall. All right, so with that, it takes us to our last opportunity for public comment. So if you're here tonight to speak on any other issue, now's an opportunity to come forward. We ask that you follow the same rules. So we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. And then we ask that you put your name over there on the clipboard so that we have it documented right. Mr. Townsend, you want to start tonight?
Yeah.
Yep, come on up.
I put my name down there.
Okay. How are you?
I'm not sure. My name is Townsend, Johnny Townsend. I live at Tin Delaware. The reason I'm here is that I don't even know how to start this. I hope I'm talking loud enough for you to hear me.
Yep, we can hear you just fine.
A person asked me, said, "Why do I stand and hold my hands behind my back when they pledging their allegiance to the flag?" And it's kind of difficult for me to pledge allegiance, especially when they say justice and freedom for all. And it's, to me, it's freedom for almost all. Because when you're 10 years old and you're down south and you've got somebody forcing you to say pledge of allegiance when you just dragged a 14-year-old boy out of a river, and that's the one that you know about. So I just say justice and liberty for almost all, and I'm one of the almost all. And the reason I say that there, too, is something else that I really have to get off my chest. I got dementia and it's working on me, so I hope I can say this right because it's going to rattle a lot of feathers. But you tell these kids, when they see something out in their neighborhood, to say something. If you see a crime going on, say something. Yet in Steel, a few months ago, when this report came out about that hidden phone call, everyone up there probably read something about what was in that report. And you seen something and you heard something. You didn't say nothing. I'm pretty sure almost every commissioner in every, well, if the commissioners didn't read it, then that's because they didn't want to read it. But if you hear that they're inclusive and all of that there, how do you expect for the neighborhood that, "I know it was better for you to hide it than to let it come out because it would have been probably financial burden for the city if some of that had come out." Because I'm one of the persons that it didn't have to come out. Because in the eighties, I have sat in the backseat of a police car, and the only thing you got to do is sit there and act like you don't know nothing. And you'd be surprised at what you hear. One of them said, "Well, I got this problem over in Darky Town now. So as soon as I finish that up, I'd be..." I had no idea what Darky Town was because from down south, they don't call it Darky Town. They've got another name for it. I had to ask a friend, "What was he talking about, Darky Town?" And then, I'm going to say this real quick. I had a friend, his last word in 2007, got shot, gun to his heart, shot on Jefferson Street. And there was an officer there that had the situation under control. But the officer that came up on the porch, Fred Zedemah, put the gun to this guy's chest and shot him. And his last words was, "I'm not after you, officer." That was the officer that had the situation under control.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Oh, my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
I'll finish this next time.
Okay, all right. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Wesley Watson, resident Angler. I'm here, my name is, well, I already said my name. I'm with Next Gen Michigan, I'm a regional director with Next Gen Michigan. It's a youth advocacy organization. I just want to speak about the economic disparities when it comes to the different wards. We are all aware of the economic disparities. And I'm asking the board and the commission, when it comes to the time to redevelop the master plan, that you guys will make considerations to make sure that every single citizen in Ward Three is represented. And it comes to that master plan. It is outrageous when we look at the economic disparities and the public health disparities. In the southeast side of Grand Rapids, we have some of the highest public health disparities in the whole entire state. And we can connect that to the economic disparities that we see. We have high levels of lead within our communities, often lead dust and lead contamination when it comes to lead paint. We have to put our money where our mouth is. We have to spend money to make sure that everybody is represented well. We have a board, we have commission individuals, we vote these individuals into office. If they're not speaking for us, if they're not speaking for the people and for the situations that's happening, then the citizens have the right to vote those individuals out of office. And so we have to understand that we control the power. And we are watching you guys, we are watching you guys, and making sure that you guys are making sure that the citizens in the Third Ward are represented well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Cornell, just representing the Third Ward. I just hope you guys do your job and hope this continues to be a welcome city. Because there were some immigrants and people were saying that they can't get their license. And I just like, wow, only if I could imagine if I can't have my license. So I'm standing for all sorts of people, especially those who has unfortunate homes and things like that.
All right.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hampton, and I am a resident of the Third Ward. I stand before you to comment on the concerns that I have regarding the significant lack of economic opportunities in the city's Third Ward. The Third Ward really is being left behind in economic development. That's just true. Last year, I was reading an article in the Grand Rapids Press in 2018, the fall of last year. And this article addressed the city's strong economic growth, which we can all attest to that, if you just look around. However, however, not all of the city, specifically the Third Ward, is not benefiting equally. There was a study done, and according to the study, the study that was conducted, the Third Ward covers one-third of the city's area and population, which is comprised of a large portion of African-Americans. However, the Third Ward received only $19.4 million, or 1.5% of the $1.29 billion in private investments, supported by the city's economic development programs in the year 2012 through 2017. I followed that. Okay, compare that to the $750 million that was invested in First Ward, the $19.4 million. Compare that to the $750 million that was invested in the First Ward and 500, I believe it was 516 million, invested in the Second Ward. And that adds up to, according to me, an obvious egregious disproportionate and disappointing fact. This inequity only further divides our city and denies economic opportunities for people of color. And I thought about to add to that, Grand Rapids, I believe, is 19% black. And then I went a little further because each of the three wards has a similar resident count, according to the Census Bureau data. My question is, what can we do as a city to ensure that the Third Ward receives equitable economic opportunities to ignite economic growth comparable to the First and Second Ward? What can we do?
Thank you.
What can we do as a people whole?
Thank you, Ms. Hampton.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thanks. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Tasha Garrett, and I live in the Second Ward. However, I represent all wards and especially the Third Ward today because that is where the highest percentage of our children are located with lead poisoning. So good evening, Mayor Bliss, city manager, and all commissioners. We are Parents, We Are Parents for Healthy Homes, a grassroots organization of parents and grandparents and concerned neighbors who have been advocating to end childhood lead poisoning since 2016. We believe children deserve to grow up in healthy homes free of all environmental hazards. The first step to improving the health and future of our city's children of priority is education. And on October 20th, started Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. We have some things to share with you. First, we would like to express our gratitude for the recent media campaigns around lead education. Education is incredibly important when it comes to prevention because we need a community that is not in the dark about the risks that surround their families. This has been done at the county level with a health department's campaign that launched this week. And at the city level with the funds designated to lead education in the Third Ward. Thank you to both the city and the county for this work. But please do not let these two campaigns be the end of your efforts to education in our community. When prioritizing prevention in addition to education, we also need concrete systematic changes. Last week Tuesday, at the mayor's Lead Free Kids Grand Rapids Committee, we had two strong calls for policy and program recommendations. One from Commissioner Repert and one from city manager Mark Washington. Commissioner Repert, we appreciate your eagerness for recommendations to be given to the city commission, as well as your willingness to take ideas that may need more work. This is far better than inaction. City Mayor, City Manager Mark Washington, thank you for communicating the need for this work to be done now. We appreciate your diligence to ensuring the lead committee is successful putting forth recommendations in a timely manner. We agree that after a year of, after a year and a half of meetings, it is time to move forward, to take real action towards protecting the future of our city, which is the future of our children. We as parents and concerned committee members are impatient for these intuitional changes. As the process moves forward in the next few months, there are three items we request you strongly consider.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Appointing, one of the things that we strongly suggest is appointing an interim person until a permanent staff member can be designated. There will be many moving parts in the next three months, and as members of the mayor's Lead Task Free Kids GR Committee and community members alike need to know who is managing the timeline, the plan for implementation, and measures of accountability. Number two, greater transparency. We are thankful as Parents for Healthy Homes to have two members on the mayor's Lead Task Force Committee, but currently, there is no way for other community members to know what is happening, what's next, and how to give feedback. Community involvement is key. Our lived experiences should shape your policies meant to protect us, and that can't happen without the voices of everyone. We request regular updates from the committee's webpage over the next three months and a method of supplying feedback on these actions. Parents for Healthy Homes made a request to the Lead Committee Chairman Corinne Frick for a time to present and allow community voices to be heard. We were told no, and that the two, that the two members that do provide, the two members that are on the committee were sufficient time and space for these voices. Although landlords were permitted to be present for half the meetings, our community voices need to be heard, and not just the monetary or the business aspect of this work. We are requesting that this be remedied by creating space where every voice can be heard.
Do you want to hit the button for you? Great, thank you. Thanks.
Priority of prevention over action. In all conversations surrounding this topic, the focus needs to be on keeping children safe.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can we just make sure that you share your name, just so that we have it recorded appropriately?
Teresa Phillips, Third Ward.
Thank you, Teresa.
Let's see, keeping children safe, on preventing harm. That means our policies and priorities need to keep children away from hazardous such as lead and not rely on measures of damage control after they have been poisoned. This also reflects the ways the Lead Committee and City Commission approaches the cost of new programs and policies. Failure to protect these children thus far should not stop the program that would do that in the future due to costs. These are our children's lives, and they do not have a dollar value. Thank you again for all your work. We are eager to partner with you in the upcoming months as we all look forward, look towards a healthier Grand Rapids for every family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Phillips. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name's Samika Douglas, and I work in the Third Ward. I want to just piggyback off of what these young ladies are saying about this lead epidemic in our neighborhoods. We see the disparity in the numbers, the monetary values that's been placed in the Second and the First Ward. Clearly, we need to make some changes. These houses are poisoning our babies, and we're too busy worried about how the landlords feel instead of how these children are feeling, how these parents are feeling, how they have to still live in poverty because some can't have, maintain adequate, excuse me, adequate employment because they have to constantly take these babies back and forth to doctor's appointments or keep relocating because landlords are putting them out once they know that the lead is in the home. We need to start getting these dollars into the Third Ward and maybe start abating some of these housing. I want to thank Link Up again for all the work that they're doing, ICCF and Dwellin, as getting these houses available for these families. However, what are we going to do? And I'm going to call out our commissioners of the Third Ward. What are we going to do? This is starting to get ridiculous that we have to keep coming up here saying the same thing over and over. When we hold you all accountable, we voted for you all to hear our voices and make things happen. It's time to step up and start making things happen. Like, some of you all have been sitting in these seats too long for, to see that disparity. Come on now, that's just ridiculous. That's ridiculous for these babies to continue to be poisoned, and nobody's doing anything. We just saying, hey, let the landlords handle it. That's the landlords. Well, let's do something for these landlords so we can have housings available, so we can have jobs available. It's a win-win for everybody if we start looking to this. Because remember, one day, these babies are going to have to take care of you. And if there's something wrong with their cognitive thinking, somebody's diapers is not going to get changed properly.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, Deandre Jones here. First of all, I wanted to give a shout out to Link Up just because I like that they're creating those apartment units, but 500 people trying to get a couple apartments is just not a cool thing. Also, Mayor Bliss, earlier I heard you talking about coffee shops and sometimes there is a salon somewhere. I'm actually going to the Forbes 30 on the 30th submit, like my guy Wesley said, to talk your talk, walk your talk. I'm very, very passionate about economic prosperity. Never know who I'm going to meet there, but I'm very passionate. I believe I can be on the Forbes list, and I believe I can be the transformational change I want to see in Grand Rapids, if it's possible. Working with the city commission, going through the planning commission with my ideas, I believe that I could potentially bring this to fruition. And the funny thing is, when I actually signed up for it, I got invited by Forbes to an invite-only dinner at a salon. So that's what was kind of funny when I heard you say that earlier. It just kind of enlightened me a little bit, let me know I might just be on the right path to be able to bring some economic prosperity. Now, I'm no beautician or anything, but I do know females like to have their hair on fleek, so if I can ever, if I can ever be able to create an opportunity for women that maybe want to open a salon maybe one day and have potential business partners and create some prosperity in the Third Ward, which is definitely needs, definitely needs business leaders and people that, that can push other people to create those businesses and show them that, that their dreams are achievable. And that's part of the reason why I want to go down there, because I'm 25 and I just believe that I can do it. I've always talked about it. I looked at the article where 51st for economic prosperity for black people. So, I mean, I've always talked about it, and now I'm about to go do it. So I'll let you know how the summary of that goes and some of the people I meet, because Kevin Durant is going to be there. He's one of my favorite basketball players. Also, what I want to say about the gun control thing is that, that we need to create more opportunities for people of color. Because most of the time, most of the time, when it comes to robberies and things like that, people of color are doing these, but I believe it's because of lack of opportunity. Or some people might, like I said, some people might have those felonies and they can't do it. And so they're just like, I'm effed up out here, I really can't do it, and I can't get that job. And so maybe we need more felony-friendly jobs, maybe we need more opportunities. And that's why I appreciate places like Link Up, because Link Up gives people those opportunities. I've sat through job fairs, and I've seen people get jobs that didn't know that they were available or the opportunity is available. So more, when we go talk about that ordinance also, I just seen a tweet from one of my favorite rappers, Meek Mill, he said, "They killed the two-year-old, and they killed the 11-month year-old." So other than just holding people accountable, we need to hold the police accountable about gun control also. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate it. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Hola, buenas tardes.
I'm actually just going to be doing a translation, since there's no translation services right now. So it might take longer than three minutes, but I'm going to make sure that she takes her three minutes.
Thanks.
Mi nombre es Ana Isabel. Duermo en Wyoming, pero me la vivo en Grand Rapids.
Her name is Ana Isabel. She works in Wyoming and lives in Wyoming, but she spends a lot of time in Grand Rapids.
Voy a dar un poco de contexto quienes somos y por qué estamos aquí para los que están presentes.
And we're going to talk a little bit of who we are, a little bit, and why we're here.
Somos miembros del Movimiento Cosecha GR, un movimiento no violento dirigido por inmigrantes para la protección permanente, la dignidad y el respeto de los 11 millones de inmigrantes indocumentados en este país.
We are members of Movimiento Cosecha GR, a nonviolent immigrant-led movement for permanent protection, dignity, respect for all 11 million undocumented immigrants in the United States.
Nuestro nombre, Cosecha, honra la larga tradición de organizaciones de trabajadores agrícolas y el dolor actual de los miles de trabajadores indocumentados cuyo trabajo continúa alimentando al país.
Our name, Cosecha, harvest in Spanish, honors the long tradition of farmworker organizing and the present day. and the present day pain of the thousands of undocumented workers whose labor continues to feed this country.
Este movimiento surgió después de un año y medio de planificación estratégica realizada por los derechos de los inmigrantes y los Dreamers que han visto a los políticos luchar, no luchar por nuestros votos y prometer legislación año tras año, pero nunca cumplen nada.
This movement emerged from a year, and I have had strategic planning by immigrant rights and Dreamer organizers who have watched politicians battle for our votes, only to stall legislation year after year.
Somos el grupo que ha marchado los primeros de mayo también en la campaña para abolir ICE y también poner fin a la complicidad de la ciudad y el condado con ICE. El año pasado, Cosecha organizó una peregrinación de cinco días hacia Lansing caminando, y por eso es de que ahora estamos aquí.
Movimiento Cosecha GR has been active in Grand Rapids for nearly three years and has organized May Day marches as well as a campaign to abolish ICE and end the cities and countries' complicity with ICE. Last year, Cosecha organized a five-day pemigrant in which immigrants walked from Grand Rapids to Lansing to demand driver licenses for all, which is why we're here today.
Todos los días, millones de padres y trabajadores inmigrantes se levantan por la mañana para ir a trabajar o llevar a los niños a la escuela. Muchos tienen que hacerlo a pie utilizando transporte público, recurriendo a pedir un aventón porque no quieren correr el riesgo de ser detenidos y posiblemente ser separados de su familia.
Every day, millions of immigrant parents and workers get up in the morning to go to work or to take their children to school. Many have to do it by foot, using public transportation, or resort to asking for a ride because they don't have, don't want to run the risk of getting, risk of driving without a license. Many others take the risk and drive because they have no other choice, holding their breath the whole way because not having a license often leads to ICE detention and family separations. The time has come for our immigrants to have licenses.
Por eso estamos aquí para que nos ayuden a arreglar ese problema.
And that's why we're here, so you could help us, so you could be part of the solution to help us fix the problem.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Deirdre Cunningham, and I live in Grand Rapids. Although the city of Grand Rapids does not issue driver's licenses, its support for the licenses for all resolution is still important. You are an influential board, and your actions speak loudly to the state legislature and the governor, as well as to the people you represent. Grand Rapids calls itself a welcoming city for immigrants, and part of feeling welcome is the feeling of security and safety that people have when they are able to access and travel through their community without fear. Your passage of this resolution shows that you view immigrants as full and equal members of this community with a right to participate in it and live their lives as all other members of the community do with security, dignity, and respect. We hope that you will quickly pass this resolution. It is similar to a resolution that was already passed this summer in Kalamazoo, and after members of the immigrant community and allies made public comment, just as we're doing here at a Kalamazoo City Commission meeting. Kalamazoo County also voted to pass a similar resolution just last month. Now it's up to you to do the same and show undocumented immigrants in Grand Rapids that you believe that they are deserving of the same dignity and respect, the same opportunities, security, and ability to live their dreams that the rest of us have. Please listen to and pass this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Rosa. I'm going to read the resolution. Until 2008, Michigan extended a universal right to a driver's license to all Michigan residents who are able and qualified to pass a knowledge and practical driving test in this state. With the 2007 opinion by the Michigan Attorney General and subsequent state legislation, driver's license applications are required to provide proof of legal presence in the United States, resulting in many members of the immigrant community being unable to obtain a Michigan driver's license. That the United States and Michigan welcomes migrant labor to grow our flowers, harvest, and serve our food, construct and maintain our houses, care for our loved ones, landscape our properties, and serve in a myriad of other ways throughout our city. However, without a driver's license, they are unable to participate fully and equally in our community. Those immigrants without a driver's license experience a diminished quality of life, affecting their ability to take care of themselves and their families and fully participate in the community they call home. The city of Grand Rapids has been recognized nationally as a hospitable and welcoming community to immigrants from around the world, who come seeking opportunity, stability, prosperity, education, and a better life for their families. Undocumented immigrants have the same hopes, fears, and dreams as every other member of our community, and we acknowledge their humanity and support them in their struggle for permanent protection, dignity, and respect. Since 2008, undocumented immigrants residing in California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Hawaii, Illinois, Maryland, Nevada, New Mexico, New York, Utah, Vermont, Washington, and Washington, D.C. can obtain a driver's license because the Federal Department of Homeland Security does not preclude the issuance of a driver's license, licenses and identification cards which do not comply with the Real ID Act. This is the resolution that we are asking that you sign in support of safety, because these things improve safety for everyone and humanity, and in support of the members of our community that currently are living in fear. Who may I hand this to?
You can give it to the clerk. Thank you. Thanks. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for your time. My name is Steph Condon, and I reside in Grand Rapids. I speak on behalf of those who don't speak because they're afraid. A simple act of driving kids to school, getting to work, going shopping, or taking a loved one to a doctor is one that carries a risk of deportation and family separation for undocumented immigrants. Immigrants who have already left their homes taking great risk and crossing dangerous terrain to come here for an opportunity. I encourage you to view the Netflix series Living Undocumented. It's very powerful and just really a beautiful piece. These folks harvest and serve our food, build and maintain homes, care for loved ones, and perform countless other jobs that build and drive this economy. Is it fair for us to use their labor but then refuse to give them licenses that allow them to participate fully in their lives and in this community? No, it's not fair. Immigrants are ready to live and leave fear behind and ask that we would support them. Will you help them? Licenses are the first step towards permanent protection and living with dignity and respect. Thirteen states have already passed laws allowing undocumented immigrants to obtain driver's license, and this was something we could do here in Michigan up until 2008. How did we end up going backwards? Governor Whip Mirror has indicated that she and her administration supports this, licenses for all. We ask you to show your support. We ask you to use your voice for the least of these. Personally, I often hear the term "God bless America." I feel like God has blessed America, and it's time for us to bless the least of these. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Gema. Buenas noches, vecinos.
Good evening. My name is Gema. Good evening, neighbors.
Estoy aquí para contarles historias que han pasado, nos han pasado nosotros, y las hemos vivido por separación de familias.
I'm here to tell you stories, stories that have happened to us. We've lived them as families.
Simplemente porque las personas estaban viajando, manejando a sus trabajos, y los detuvieron por no tener licencia.
Simply because people were traveling, they were driving to work, and they were detained because they were, they had no license.
Una amiga mía, Marilu, llevaba a su hijo a trabajar, y los detuvieron, y los dos estuvieron en detención con inmigración.
A friend of mine, Marilu, she was driving to work, driving her son to work, and they were detained by immigration.
Ella tiene dos hijas, una de ellas de seis años que tiene habilidades especiales, no puede aprender bien.
She has two daughters. One of them is six years old. She has learning disabilities.
Y ese día se quedaron solas para regresar a su casa, porque su mamá y su hermano no pudieron llegar a recogerlas.
And that day, they were left home alone, and mom was not able to return home because her son was also detained.
Su hijo les había permitido ir a un juego de basketball esa tarde.
Her son had promised them, sisters, to take them to a basketball game that evening.
Es una simple vida. Todas tenemos esa vida, y solamente porque no tienen una licencia de manejo, esa vida fue interrumpida.
This is a simple life. We all have this life, and that day, that life was interrupted because they did not have a license.
Si pudiéramos ponernos en sus zapatos y sentir esa separación y esa angustia, estuviéramos apoyando esta resolución sin pensarlo hoy mismo.
If we could put ourselves in their shoes and feel that anguish and that pain, today we would pass that resolution.
Hace dos semanas tuve una operación y no podía manejar, y tenía que pedir a mis amigos y a mis familiares que me ayudaran a llevar a mi hija a la escuela.
Two weeks ago, I had a surgery, and I couldn't drive, and I had to rely on my friends and family to help me by taking my daughter to school.
Fue muy difícil estas dos semanas. Aún aquí estoy todavía, alguien me trajo para estar aquí presente.
Those two weeks were very difficult. Even today, somebody brought me here so that I could be present.
Entonces, les estoy pidiendo que si han vivido un poquito de lo que los inmigrantes vivimos en una ciudad que dice que ser, que nos da la alegría y el agradecimiento de estar aquí.
So then today, I'm asking you if you've lived in the same city that we've lived, a city that says that are happy that we are here?
Y que ayudamos a esta economía en todo tipo de trabajos y en todo tipo de servicios, entonces les estamos pidiendo que pasen esta resolución inmediatamente.
And we live here in this city. We do all kinds of work, and we ask you, all kinds of service, we ask you to pass this resolution immediately.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is JR Martin. I live in Grand Rapids on Anishinaabe land. So we know that the city of Grand Rapids has stated an intention to make the city more equitable in outcomes for vulnerable communities. A large part of equity work is listening carefully to what affected communities are asking for. There have already been many opportunities for that tonight, and I want to express solidarity and support as well for Parents for Healthy Homes and people who have addressed issues in the Third Ward, because these struggles are all connected. One of Cosecha's principles is that we are a movement, not an advocacy group or nonprofit, and as a movement for the people, Cosecha doesn't dance with politicians or political parties. That does mean that Cosecha are outsiders in this political arena. We don't have meetings behind closed doors. We don't have connections with politicians. We find that when we are invited to the table, it doesn't help build our movement with the people themselves, and it ends up with politicians trying to co-opt the messaging. So when you agree to listen to immigrants and pass this resolution, you are listening to the people who don't usually have special access. You're listening to what the most affected people, the most vulnerable, want the most. When you ask the immigrant community what they really want to fight for, the first thing they say is papers. But if they can't get papers yet, then what they really want is licenses. People will often say that immigrants should get in line or come in the right way, but there is no line to get into. Employers desire immigrant workers and aggressively recruit them for jobs, but there is no support for gaining a path to permanent protection. Regaining licenses is the first step. It is equity work that must be done in the city of Grand Rapids, so we urge you to pass the resolution.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard? Hi.
Hello, good evening. My name is Quinn Burke. I live on the northeast side. I'm here as an ally with Movimiento Cosecha. Grand Rapids is one of 50 communities in the United States that received a Gateways for Growth Award from the NAE, or the New American Economy, in 2017 to help make it a welcoming city for immigrants. The stated purpose of Gateways for Growth Initiative is to foster economic growth in U.S. cities by welcoming and integrating immigrants. The president of NAE, John Feinbalt, said that while Congress debates the value of immigration in city after city, the evidence is already in. Immigrants revive neighborhoods and drive economic growth. We know that our economy is already driven by immigrant labor. Giving undocumented immigrants the ability to drive with a license will allow them to more freely travel to and from work, as well as to the businesses where they spend money. If being a welcoming city means encouraging immigrants to participate in its economy, it only makes sense to pass the Licenses for All Resolution. But there is more to being a welcoming city than using immigrant labor and buying power to improve the economy. It's also about feeling safe and secure in the community in which you live. When the simple act of traveling through your community puts you at risk for deportation and separation from your family, it's impossible to feel safe or welcome. Giving immigrants the same documents that the rest of us have, which allow them to travel in and participate in their communities the same way that the rest of us do, without fear of deportation and family separation, helps them feel secure and welcome here. Nobody should have to live in constant, nobody should have to live in constant fear, especially in a welcoming city like Grand Rapids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Idalia Tinoco.
Good evening. Her name is Idalia Tinoco.
Yo soy comerciante, dueña de dos restaurantes, y solamente vengo a tratar de poner los problemas que como comerciantes tenemos.
Hi, I'm a businesswoman, and I have two restaurants, two businesses, and I'm here to talk about the issues that business owners have.
Esto nos pasa a todos los pequeños negocios que desafortunadamente no tenemos documentos.
This happens to a lot of the small businesses who are undocumented.
Y no solamente somos hispanos. Sabemos que hay muchos otros dueños de negocios que no cuentan con documentos.
We also know that Latinos, Hispanics are not the only ones who are undocumented. There are other, other people who are undocumented. They also own businesses here in Grand Rapids.
Para nosotros a veces es difícil simplemente ir a traer mercancía a las tiendas.
And for us, it's very difficult to go get merchandise at the stores.
Es difícil hacer un servicio de catering.
And it's also very hard to provide catering services.
Es difícil para nosotros encontrar la forma de hacer crecer nuestros negocios, todo esto por una licencia de manejo.
It's very hard for us to grow our businesses because we don't have a driver's license because of that.
Quizás mis negocios son pequeños, pero hacen una venta de 200,000 pesos al año cada uno, pero yo soy una persona con dos negocios pequeños, y conozco de muchas otras personas que son dueñas de negocio y no tienen documentos.
Even though my business is small, and each of them make about 200,000 each, that's two businesses that she owns, and there's a lot of small businesses like that.
Lo que yo quiero es que vean que si tenemos la capacidad de tener un negocio y salir adelante... adelante sin tener ese documento, se imaginen ustedes qué más podemos lograr si ustedes nos ayudan con esa licencia.
As you notice, what we could accomplish without a driver's license, just imagine how much we could accomplish with a driver's license.
Tengo a mi hija, que traje yo, está ella ahí sentada, de dos años, a este país por un mejor futuro.
Today, this evening, I brought my daughter, who's sitting right there, when she was two years old.
Ella, en este momento, está en el GRCC, pero a su edad tiene una cuenta de banco donde ella sola podría comprarse un carro, pero no sabe manejar.
And she currently is a GRC student, and she has a, an accounting, a checking account where she has enough money to buy a car, but she doesn't know how to drive.
Porque ella no tuvo la oportunidad de poder sacar una licencia, o no ha tenido la oportunidad de sacar una licencia por falta de un seguro social.
Because she hasn't had the opportunity to be able to take a driver's license out because of the social security number.
Yo siempre he querido y he tratado de ser un ejemplo para ella y su hermano, pero las, la situación no nos, no les ha permitido salir como yo quisiera que salieran adelante.
She will like more opportunities for her children. She has always been a model for opportunity to her children, but the opportunities have not been there for her children because of a driver's license.
Yo les he demostrado que con trabajo fuerte se logra mucho puesto que nosotros llegamos.
I have showed them with hard work, you're able to accomplish a lot.
Llegamos sin dinero y solamente con la ropa que traíamos puesta, y hasta el momento somos dueños de dos restaurantes.
They arrived here without money and only with the clothes they had on their backs, and right now they're business owners of two businesses.
Les pongo esto en su corazón, que de verdad necesitamos su ayuda para cumplir, terminar de cumplir nuestro sueño americano.
And we need you to help us to be, to help us, help us be able to make our dreams true, our American dream comes true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es José Guadalupe Jiménez. You live in Grand Rapids?
Hello, his, his name is José Guadalupe Jiménez, and he lives in Grand Rapids.
Yo voy a hablar de por qué son importantes las licencias.
And I'm going to talk why driver licenses are important.
Las licencias son importantes para conducir, asegurando que quienes conducen sepan cómo manejar un vehículo motorizado de manera segura.
Driver licenses are important for driving, ensuring that those who drive know how to safely operate a motor vehicle.
Pero tener una licencia es más que solo manejar. Las licencias se usan para identificar y pueden ser necesarias para cosas como abrir una cuenta de banco.
But having a driver's license is more than just driving. Licenses are used for identification and may be required for many things like opening a bank account.
Escribir un cheque personal, solicitar beneficios de gobierno, o un préstamo, una licencia, inscribirse en la escuela, o usar una tarjeta, tarjeta de débito o crédito.
Writing a personal check, applying for government benefits or a loan, enrolling, enrolling in school, or using a debit or credit card.
Si tiene un accidente y no puedes comunicarse, una licencia de conducir permite a los socorristas comunicarse con sus seres queridos.
If you are in an accident and aren't able to communicate, a driver's license allows you, first responders, to contact your loved ones.
Puede identificarlo como donante de órganos. Una licencia de conducir se utiliza como prueba de edad. Si solicita un cóctel, o una cerveza, o una copa de vino, o una comida, es posible, debe mostrar su licencia.
It can identify you as an organ donor. A driver's license is used as proof of age. If you order a cocktail or a glass of wine with a meal, you will be required to show your license.
Lo mismo es cierto si quieres salir a bailar, a un club, o ver una película clasificada R. Cuando vuelas dentro de los Estados Unidos, la mayor de las aerolíneas requieren que muestre una licencias, una licencia antes de abordar un avión.
The same is true if you want to go out dancing at a club or see a ready-made movie. When you fly within the United States, most airlines require you to show a license before you are able to board.
De hecho, en octubre de 2020, necesitará una nueva Real ID mejorada para volar a cualquier lugar, así como para ingresar a cualquier edificio federal.
In fact, in October 2020, you will need a new enhanced Real ID to fly anywhere, as well as to enter any federal buildings.
En otras palabras, las licencias permiten a los inmigrantes no solo conducir, sino participar en todas las actividades que todos los hacemos al diario para vivir y disfrutar nuestras vidas.
In other words, licenses allow immigrants not only to drive, but to participate in all the activities that we do on a daily basis in order to live and enjoy our lives.
Los inmigrantes hacen que nuestras comunidades sean mejores y más diversas, enriquecen la economía y la comunidad. Merecen la misma oportunidad de vivir sus vidas y alcanzar sus sueños que el resto de los otros los hemos hecho. Y eso comienza en Grand Rapids, con la aprobación de la resolución de licencias para todos.
Immigrants make our communities better and are more diverse. They enrich the economy as well as the community. And they deserve the same opportunity to live their lives and achieve their dreams that the rest of us have and starts in Grand Rapids with passing the License for All resolution.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Jeff Smith, Grand Rapids.
El es Jeff Smith, de Grand Rapids.
Y voy a leer mi parte en español porque hay mucha gente aquí que, que no entienden inglés, y los que ven a ver el video que no entienden inglés también.
And I'm going to read my part in Spanish because there's a lot of people here in this room that don't understand English, and the people who are watching this video don't understand the video, I mean, English as well.
Hace un año, cuarenta inmigrantes de todo el estado de Michigan hicieron una peregrinación desde Grand Rapids a la capital del estado en Lansing, caminando por cinco días en su caminata para manejar, para llamar la atención sobre la campaña de las licencias.
One year ago, forty immigrants from all over the state of Michigan made a pilgrimage from Grand Rapids to the state capitol in Lansing, walking together over five days and caminata para manejar, walk to drive, to bring attention to the License for All campaign.
Caminaban, bailaban y cantaban bajo la lluvia a pesar de los desafíos físicos, compartían comidas comunales y durmieron por la noche en los pisos de las iglesias.
They walked, they danced, sang, chanted through the rain despite physical challenges, sharing communal meals and sleeping at night on the church floors.
Ana Isabel, una organizadora de movimiento Kossecha, dijo sobre la peregrinación. A caminar y protestar. Estamos inspirando a nuestra comunidad y haciendo crecer nuestro movimiento todos los días.
Ana Isabel, an organizer with Movimiento Kossecha, said of the pilgrimage, "By walking and protesting, we are inspiring our community and growing our movement every day."
Cuando los inmigrantes de todos los rincones del estado estén listos para actuar juntos, entonces tendremos el poder de ganar.
When immigrants from every corner of the state are ready to take action together, then we will have the power to win.
La peregrinación combinó una celebración en los escalones de la capital del estado. Recibió cobertura de noticias en todo el estado y fue el comienzo de la campaña para hacer realidad las licencias para todos en Michigan.
The pilgrimage commemorated in the celebratory rally on the steps of the state capitol. It received statewide news coverage and was the start of the campaign to make License for All a reality in Michigan.
En los debates presidenciales demócratas de este, de este año en Detroit, una organización de Kossecha le preguntó al gobernador, gobernador Whitmer, sobre licencias para todos. La gobernadora dijo...
At this year's Democratic presidential debates in Detroit, a Kossecha organizer asked Governor Whitmer about driver's license for all, and the governor said...
Necesitamos asegurarnos que los todos tengan un camino para obtener una licencia, para que economía es importante para la gente de Michigan.
We need to ensure that everyone, everyone's got a, everyone has a pathway to getting a license, so they, so they have identification.
El procurador general del estado a la secretaria de estado también dijeron que apoyaron un proyecto de ley de licencias para todos.
There's something that is important to me. It's important to our economy and it's important to the people of Michigan. The state attorney general and the secretary of state had also both said they will support a driver's license for all bill.
Ya los inmigrantes han hecho el trabajo de emprender una peregrinación físicamente desafiante para que la legislatura estatal y el público en general sepa por qué es tan necesaria y importante una licencia para ellos. Ahora, depende de ustedes dar el siguiente paso y respalda esta resolución.
Immigrants have done the difficult work of undertaking a physically challenging work of pilgrimage, letting you, the state legislators, and the general public know why license for all is important to them. Now it's up to you to take the next step and support this resolution.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hola, mi nombre es Kelly Ortega y soy de Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Hola, el nombre de ella es Kelly Ortega y es de Michigan.
Tiene sentido que la gobernadora, la secretaria de estado y la fiscal general apoyen las licencias de conducir para nuestros vecinos indocumentados, porque hasta 2008 el estado de Michigan los emitió sin problemas.
It makes sense that the governor, the secretary of state, the attorney general support driver's license for our undocumented neighbors, but until 2008, the state of Michigan issued them with no problem.
Una opinión del fiscal general de Michigan del 95 concluyó que no había ninguna ley que impidiera que un inmigrante indocumentado estableciera su residencia en Michigan.
In 1995, Michigan attorney, attorney general opinion concluded that there was no law recruiting an undocumented immigrant from establishing residence in Michigan.
El estatuto relevante definía a un residente como el que reside en un hogar o domicilio establecido o permanente con la intención de permanecer en este estado, y no contenía ninguna referencia a la ciudadanía o el estado migratorio. Esto permitió a los inmigrantes obtener una identificación de Michigan y una licencia de conducir.
The relevant statute defined as a resident as one who resides in a settled or permanent home or domicile with the intention of remaining in the state, and it contained no reference of citizenship or immigration status. This allowed immigrants to secure Michigan ID and a driver's license.
Pero en el 2007, el fiscal general Mike Cox revocó esa decisión, diciendo que solo aquellos que poseían tarjetas de residencia permanente podrían establecer la residencia.
But in 2007, Attorney General Mike Cox reversed that decision, saying that only those holding permanent resident cards could establish residency.
En enero de 2008, la secretaria de estado Terry Lynn Land se puso del lado de la decisión de Cox, diciendo que los inmigrantes indocumentados no podían obtener licencias. La gobernadora Jennifer Granholm se puso del lado de Land al negar licencias.
In January 2008, Secretary of State Terry Land, then sided with Cox's ruling, saying that undocumented immigrants cannot get licenses. Governor Jennifer Granholm sided with Land in denying licenses.
Más tarde, más tarde ese año en 2008, las legisladoras estatales aprobaron una ley que aclaraba que los inmigrantes indocumentados no podían obtener licencias de conducir, cambiando repintamente las circunstancias para los inmigrantes que han vivido aquí durante estas décadas.
Later that year, in 2008, state legislators passed a law that clarified that undocumented immigrants cannot get driver's license, sending over 100,000 immigrants, suddenly changing the circumstances for immigrants who had lived here for decades, who are now driving on expired licenses to work, to take their children to school, and to go to church.
Hagan que en Grand Rapids se aseguren nuevamente. Hagan que las carreteras sean más seguras y protejan a nuestros vecinos de la causa más común de separación familiar. Aproveben la resolución para reinstalar las licencias de conducir para inmigrantes indocumentados.
Make Grand Rapids safe again. Make the road safe by licensing all qualified drivers and help protect our neighbors from the most common cause of family separation. Pass the resolution to support driver's license and state IDs for undocumented immigrants.
Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is MC. I live in the First Ward of Grand Rapids. Pardon me, we've been staying this whole time. I bet y'all are tired too, so thanks for sticking with us. We've heard the concerns raised by some officials, and we want to counter those. The concern number one, having licenses that are different, that look different, because the license will have a different design to note that the immigrant holder cannot vote, will target immigrants for ICE. That's the concern. Kossecha's response, "We are already targeted as criminals for driving on an expired license. That is a bigger risk for us. It is true that in some states, the DMV or Secretary of State shares the license database with ICE and the FBI. This is why we fight against complicity with ICE at all levels. It is important for the city of Grand Rapids to support us in this fight. But because there are multiple ways to access the information of undocumented folks, such as ITINs, Individual Taxpayer Identification Numbers, etc., saying that winning a license... Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto.
Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está organizando para no ser invisibles nunca más. Hemos venido a decirles que somos más que un signo de dólares para esta sociedad. Somos más que carreteras seguras. Somos más que ingresos monetarios para el estado. Queremos que se nos reconozca con dignidad y respeto como personas que residimos en este condado, y por eso estamos exigiendo que nuestra resolución se ponga en la agenda muy pronto. Honestamente, no he venido aquí a explicar nuestro poder económico y laboral, ni he venido aquí a decirles que sin el trabajo de inmigrantes, la ciudad y el condado de Calamazú y, en efecto, toda la ciudad de Michigan se detendría. Ni siquiera he venido aquí a decirles las historias aterradoras que sufre nuestra comunidad día con día por no tener licencia. Lo que hemos venido a decirles es que la comunidad indocumentada de Calamazú se está
I want to lend Equity PAC's support in Movimiento Kossechas asking the city for the resolution and passage of the resolution for driver's license for all. When you were laying out your strategic plan earlier this year, one of the highlights was equity and has been for a while here in the city. And I just wanna, I wanna take a moment and read exactly what it says from that strategic plan. Our values are what we stand for. They are embedded throughout the entire plan and guide all city work. And under equity, it says leveraging city influence and intentionally remove and prevent barriers created by systemic and institutional injustices. This is definitely one of those situations of leveraging the city's voice in helping its community. All people of the community in the city. So I hope that you, I hope that you heed what they're asking for and pass this as it's been something that's been asked for for a while. Also, I want to take a moment and switch topics a little bit. I know Mr. Townsend was speaking on this earlier about the deletion of all of the files that were, all of the audio files that were recorded on that line. I know I've spoken about it in the past. I am extremely disappointed that that was the, what happened with this. I understand that there may have been liability issues or potential of liability issues, but when you put the potential of liability above accountability, you no longer have any priority of accountability. We needed, as a public, to be able to look at what was on those lines to see if there was any sort of systemic pattern of behavior and be open and honest about it if we want to correct the problems that we have between the community and the police and the lack of trust between the community and the police. Every time that we try to take a step forward in trying to improve those relations, these types of actions take us two steps back because it causes that mistrust to get worse and deepen. So I really wish that a different action would have been taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Ms. Homestead for those comments. Alright, others wish to be heard?
Thank you guys for staying so long. I'll try to make this quick. This is to thank the following people of the GRPD. First Cindy, the receptionist that I called on the 14th of this month. She was nice, pleasant, took her time to help me. The service area captain, Mark Ostopovich. Nice, pleasant, listened to me and returned my call according to Chief Payne. And direct supervisor Sergeant Neil Gomez. Very nice, pleasant, listened to me, said he would come out to Adams Park Apartments today or tomorrow and he actually came out that same day. And we introduced ourselves. He met the staff and everybody. He walked past the office and out into the halls and down the halls. And we were talking and engaging in a conversation that was good. And this is all due to a complaint that I called down about our community officer Chad Van Dam. He never comes past that office to say hi, whatever, whatever, unless he's arresting somebody or whatever. And it was only because he's our community officer I wrote a letter that asked him if he could help with the 911 non-emergency calls that we give, that we ask when we call for someone to come help us. And the thing is, the last person that called got this nasty little thing, a response from the operator saying, "If they aren't killing anybody, then they're too busy to come." And in the letter, Officer Van Dam made it about me and not about the residents that had a problem in that area. He had a problem with me putting down the last paragraph. "Respect the call for assistance from area code 49507 Adams Park Apartments." And he said, "I was trying to make it racial." It was racial. And he was just saying, "We never got to 911 dispatcher's response. If they aren't killing anybody, then they're too busy to call." Also, the dispatcher never gave me a call back. Sergeant Gomez said he would have the 911 non-emergency supervisor give me a call. He never did. I didn't think he would and I'm not waiting for it. So if you don't do anything to try and stop this, you condone this type of activity and treatment, obviously. And all I say is, on a note, some of them are good. Hey, I know that. You guys, thank you. Oh, I have a paper.
Thank you. Thanks. Yep, come on, Mr. Peterson.
Already eight seconds down before I get to here.
No, no, we'll reset it. We got it.
Thank you. Bill Peterson, Cherry Street, Crank. Tonight it's snow observations. A few years ago, we had somebody running the snowplow department here that got caught in California during a snowstorm and he got replaced. And I immediately noticed that there were a lot less snowplows running by my house at night and that was very wonderful because we didn't need as many to keep the street clean. Now, there's obviously somebody with some common sense at a high level in that department. If that somebody can decide when we should move snow and when we should wait for it to melt, is it possible that that same somebody could decide for the rest of us when we had to clear our sidewalks and when we could wait to have it melt? Currently, the way the sidewalk snow resolution seemed to be is that we have to have our sidewalks absolutely clean and dry in 48 hours. This can be very difficult, especially the last quarter of an inch of ice or so if that happens to be how it is. If your ordinance was adjusted to allow for somebody to just clear the snow off the sidewalk such that the rest of it could melt and if that clearance was some number that was close to a common snowblower size or a common snowplow size or something else such that somebody could clear their sidewalk to 46 inches instead of 48 and not get a ticket. It would also be nice if, instead of having to deal with expensive inspectors, that if you did get a complaint of some sorts that your sidewalk wasn't clear, that you could get, take a picture of it and email it to somebody and avoid all that extra inspection and looking at expense. Also, for some of us people that are stuck on a corner, the ordinances seem to tell us that we need to clear all the snow from the curb out till wherever the thing is plowed. And if we don't clear that, then we are subject to all these nasty fines and inspections and everything else. And of course, if you are in the city and you do your own snow clearing, you'll notice that after you clear the snow out of the corner, then the city snowplow generally plows it back in. And on top of all that, if you shovel it out, if you put it-
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Lorena Guayo Márquez y vivo en 49, if you want to, um, Third Ward. Hi, my name is Lorena Guayo Márquez and I live in the Third Ward. And I'm only gonna read this in English because it's getting late. As our movement has been working with local businesses, we found that many of them support the idea of licenses for undocumented neighbors and for good reason, which I'll talk about in a moment. The local businesses such as City Built Brewery, Brooks &amp; Mortar in Linto, Mexico, as well as locally owned franchises such as the Comfort Inn at the airport and Bruce Mobile on South Division are all displaying the window de can, they can, that says the businesses, this business supports licenses for all. They have made clear that they want immigrants to have as much mobility as possible. As you may have heard, our economy is facing another possible recession in the next year. This is crucial time to pass licenses, the license bill as it will result in morbidity and therefore move economic consumption among immigrants who already contribute 3.3 billion to the Kent County area. Immigrants who can move through the community without fear will be able to go across town to shop and to visit friends. They will be able to purchase cars with financing and dealerships without fear. They will be able to buy insurance for their cars and for local providers. They will have the ID needed to start their own businesses. Freedom of movement is an essential part of a healthy economy. Show the state of Michigan that the city of Grand Rapids understands that. Pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Lizbeth Fuentes. Hola, mi nombre es Lizbeth Fuentes. Y estoy aquí representando a la ciudad de Calamaçú, no a la ciudad, solamente representando a Calamaçú. Como fue mencionado hace rato, en julio de este año, una resolución fue aprobada por la ciudad de Calamaçú y en septiembre de este año, la resolución fue pasada también por el condado de Calamaçú. Estoy aquí porque quiero decirles lo mismo que les dije a los políticos de Calamaçú. Todos son iguales, por eso vengo a decirles lo mismo. Cuando se trata, cuando se trata de tomar nuestros impuestos, ustedes no tienen ningún problema. Cuando se trata de tomar nuestra labor, ustedes no tienen ningún problema. Así que lo mínimo, lo más mínimo que pueden hacer hoy y que pueden hacer para nuestra, para nuestra familia inmigrante es pasar la resolución. Les pedimos ponerlo en su agenda para su próxima reunión. So, my name is Lizbeth Fuentes and I am from Calamaçú. I am here representing Calamaçú. As it was mentioned before, the city of Calamaçú passed a resolution in favor of driver's licenses just this last summer. Similarly, Calamaçú County also passed a resolution just last month in September. And I am here to tell you the same thing I told the politicians in Calamaçú. When it comes to taking our taxes, you don't have a problem. When it comes to taking our labor, you don't have a problem. So the minimum, the very minimum you can do for your people here in Grand Rapids is to pass a resolution in favor of driver's licenses. We ask you to put it on the agenda for your next meeting and of course, to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else wishes to be heard? Okay, I'm gonna close that public comment period and I will start tonight with comments down here with my colleague, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you Mayor. I want to thank everyone who came out this evening and those who took the opportunity to speak as well as those who didn't, but you were present. Appreciate that. I also want to take a moment to make mention of the fact that we approved earlier in fiscal this morning a pretty, we got some pretty good news and that was a $4.2 million grant that we got from HUD around lead-based paint hazard reduction. And so with that particular grant, we're gonna be able to identify and correct lead and other health hazards in 140 housing units, support 100 outreach activities focusing on high-risk neighborhoods, train 900 residents in lead-safe cleaning practices, train 360 landlords and/or contractors as certified renovators and train 21 local residents to be lead abatement professionals and seven individual and/or contractors to be certified lead abatement contractors. So I wanted to share that with the, with the public. It's a wonderful bit of news because it's actually $1.3 million more than we got last time. So it's, I think, worth, worth celebrating. And again, there actually is not enough money because there's a significant need to deal with the lead issue. But we will take what we can get, so. Thank you Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for elevating that. Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you Mayor. April 26, 2019, the Honorable Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, 430 West Allianz Street, Richard H. Austin Building, fourth floor, Lansing, Michigan, 4948918. Dear Secretary of State Benson, we are writing to express our support for amending current state law to allow qualified undocumented immigrants to obtain driver's licenses. Allowing undocumented immigrants to obtain driver's licenses will improve public safety and is in the best interest of all Michiganders because immigrants wanting to drive legally will have to pass a written knowledge, roadside vision and driving skills test, register their vehicles and provide proof of insurance. Driving is necessary for many undocumented immigrants to conduct their daily activities. Whether it's for work to take their children to school or for other important appointments, driving is a necessity. To ensure road safety and accountability, the state of Michigan Department of State should provide qualified undocumented immigrants with driver's licenses regardless of their immigration status. This will also mean increased revenue for the state from license and registration fees and may lead to lower car insurance premiums for all Michiganders. Across the country, 12 states, including the District of Columbia, allow undocumented immigrants to obtain driver's licenses, including New Mexico, Utah, Oregon, Nevada, Illinois, Washington, Maryland, Vermont, Colorado, Connecticut, Hawaii and California. These states issue license if the applicant provides certain documentation such as a foreign birth certificate, a foreign passport or a counselor card and evidence of current residency in the state. Allowing undocumented immigrants to obtain the driver's license will help emergency personnel in providing emergency care, provide access to basic public services such as enrolling their children in school and participating in school activities with their children, promote public safety by reducing fear of interacting with law enforcement and provide access to financial services such as opening a bank account. The city of Grand Rapids aspires to be nationally recognized as an equitable, welcoming, innovative and collaborative city with a robust economy, safe and healthy community and the opportunity for all for a high quality of life. We support undocumented immigrants being able to lawfully obtain driver's licenses and urge you to propose legislation that would allow immigrants to more easily integrate into their communities to benefit all Michiganders. Sincerely, Mayor Rosalynn Bliss, Commissioner Kurt Repart, Commissioner Ruth Kelly, Commissioner Joe Jones, Commissioner John O'Connor, Commissioner Nate Moody. Copy sent to Honorable Governor Gretchen Whitmer, Honorable Senator Winnie Brinks, Honorable Representative David LeGrand and Honorable Representative Rachel Hood. Thank you.
Commissioner. And if you want a copy of the letter that we sent in the spring, I have extra copies up here and you are welcome to them. Commissioner. I just want to be really clear that if you want a copy of what Commissioner O'Connor just read, it's here. Commissioner Linne?
Yes, thank you to those who came out this evening. I have a couple of points I'd like to make. The first one is regarding the noise ordinance. Someone was asking questions about the fines and fees. I don't know if any staff members took that information. I don't even remember now who asked the question, to be honest. But if we could make sure that we get back to that person because I know that when we were discussing the noise ordinance, we talked about warnings prior to getting to the point of the fines. So if we could have that conversation. Anyone who wants specific, to talk specifically to me about the Third Ward equity issues and any of the articles or my advocacy. My telephone number is on the agenda and they can call me directly. I'd love to talk about my years of advocacy for the Third Ward and actually coming up short as it relates to being able to receive adequate funding for the ward. So I'd love to have that conversation and actually get support for that. And then I'd like to piggyback on the letter that Commissioner O'Connor read and I think to the point that came after the letter was read. I am curious, since unanimously we all signed it, why we couldn't convert the letter then into an ordinance to send to the state of Michigan. I do think that the consistent advocacy at the state level is where a lot of time needs to be spent so that someone at- to be spent so that someone at the state level could then convert that into a bill, but just curious about the interest of this body about converting that support into an ordinance. Your resolution, excuse me.
Resoluti, nono. Thanks. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, thank you, everybody. I first want to thank Lorena and Sergio for translating for people tonight, and I know that that's hard work on the brain to do that. I also want to thank my colleague, Commissioner O'Connor, who got that letter to draft in the Legislative Committee and got it to all of us to sign. And we're, I've always been a supporter of driver's license for all, and all of us are up here as well. Certainly open to converting it to a resolution if that's more significant, but we can discuss that. Couple of things that I've done also regarding driver's license for all, I met with Representative Hood to strategize about how to get a bill introduced. I know Ruth Kelly, Commissioner Kelly, has also met with, we both have met with the legal counsel for the Secretary of State to talk about a pathway for this. It isn't the easiest path, but we have, there is a path. I've also had a great conversation with the Chamber of Commerce as a part of our Gateways for Growth Initiative, and their lobbyists, for lack of a better word, are also on board with getting on support for this, advocating it with the state. And Chief Payne and I have had a great conversation about it as well, and he's very open to integrating that with his team for the Police Department. So I do appreciate the reminder that we need to kind of constantly push and remind the state that we are in favor of this change. Lastly, I just want to make mention of our decision to partner with the State Land Bank. I believe, I believe, we can have a discussion about it, that was, that's the best decision for us right now. We had to act quickly when the Kent County Land Bank dissolved. I will say that there are two land trusts being formed right now by our nonprofit partners, and there's ongoing conversations with quite a few people about what it would look like to leverage those and expand those. So I'd be more than welcome to meet with Mr. Girard and any others who want to talk about the conversations I've had around land trusts in the community and our decision to work with the State Land Bank in this moment when we had to make a decision. So thanks, everybody. Again, thank you to Lorena and Sergio for translating.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Madam Mayor, I don't have any comment tonight.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just have to say that to my commissioner on the left who had no comment tonight, I have a comment to make, and that is congratulations, Commissioner Moody, for your recognition the other night at the NAACP banquet, and congratulations to Commissioner Linney for putting that, organizing it, so wonderful. And good night. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm happy that our colleagues explained some of the concerns tonight that were expressed here. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. And you?
Just real quickly, 16,000 ballots have been mailed out. We got about half of them back. If you have a ballot, just having it does not cast it, so make sure you return it and make sure you return it in enough, in enough time. So remember, the post office takes more than one day now, so make sure you get those. We also have a drop box on 300 Ottawa, so.
Thank you. City Attorney? City Manager?
$70,000 out of the...
Martha, Martha, it's not your turn to talk. You've already had a chance. It is not your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the staff for all of their hard work and also acknowledge one of our new staff members, our city engineer, Tim Bergman, who's with us tonight, and also thank James Hurt for his efforts in being managing director for us. We want to also acknowledge Jeff McCall again for the great work that he's done in the interim period. And I, too, it seems like with our meetings, we pass consent so quickly that people are unable to perhaps appreciate the conversations that went on earlier. I start to, I'm starting to see and feel that more and more. And so a couple of other things that happened today for the Third Ward for equity is around some of the development. We were talking about the feasibility for the MLK Lodge, feasibility study, as well as the, as well as, I'm sorry, as well as the, um, lead awareness, I'm sorry, yeah, the $50,000 for the lead awareness investment, making sure that we partner with the county and proving that. I do also want to thank the Commission for ensuring our commitment to business development and recruitment in all of our wards and with the support of the retail effort that, retention and expansion effort that we've approved today. So thank you for that as well. And I just appreciate all the public for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts.
Yeah, thanks. And I'll end with my thanks twofold. I echo what my colleague said. Driver's license for all will remain a legislative priority for us. I, too, have met with Secretary of State's office and the Governor's office, and they're well aware of our support. And then also, I'm gonna add my thanks to Lorena and Sergio for translating. I relayed to both my city clerk and our city manager that we need to make sure that we have translation services available during these meetings, so we'll follow up on that, and hopefully we'll be able to integrate something in the future to make sure that that's available. So thank you for doing that. And with that, I'll call it a night. Have a good night, everyone. Be safe.